Second to the pledge of allegiance. Okay, you're good when the world gets back to normal, we can have some Cub Scouts and some Boy Scouts come back in here. That's right, big step forward. Okay, let's see. Mr. Morano, we have a superintendent's report for this evening or?
We don't have a superintendent's report, it's really just our budget presentation tonight, but I did want to just make a few remarks.
Of course.
Regarding a former principal teacher at Bellingham. So a former teacher and administrator, James Malali, passed away. He started his career in Bellingham in 1970 as a teacher and then retired in 2006 as a principal at previously South Elementary School, Mount DePietro Elementary School. Mr. Malali, excellent teacher, wonderful administrator, and a phenomenal person. He'll be sadly missed, but I knew him just a little bit as I started out as an administrator and he gave me some tips and advice when I first started. And he was just so kind and compassionate and empathetic, just really, really a wonderful person and, you know, he'll definitely be missed.
Well, thank you for sharing that news for us. You know, now all of us had the privilege to get to know him and I'm so happy to learn of him and of his presence in the community. And clearly he will be missed and our thoughts and condolences from this committee go to his family. And we're thinking of him and we thank him for all his contributions to our districts. Thank you for those words. Okay, all right, so we're kind of gathering tonight really to address the budget presentation, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have approximately thirty-ish slides. There'll be some slides we'll move through kind of quickly and there'll be others that we'll spend a little bit more time on.
Okay.
And I think as you said in the past, if people have questions, certainly enter into the chat feature in Zoom and I'll keep an eye on it. Mrs. Rafferty's on also and she can keep an eye. And with that being said, if you're ready.
Do you want to vote on the school choice first?
Do you want to do that first?
Sure, why not? Get that out of the way and then we can focus on the thirty-ish slides.
So every year we come to the school committee to, for you to vote on our school choice numbers. And that's the number of slots we're going to have open in our schools by grade level. And I'll just run through them real quick. Sue, I don't think you have this, I'll send it to you in the morning, okay? Unless Joe shared it. At Stalbrooke, we're going to have three openings at the K level. No openings in grades one and two, one opening in grade three. DePietro, no openings across the board, K to three. The Memorial School, four openings in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade. And at VHS, two openings in eighth grade, five and ninth, five and tenth, two and eleventh, and zero and twelfth. So any students that are currently school choice, totally fine, that doesn't change anything we have here. These are new additional slots we want to open up.
How do we go about determining that? Maybe we just have a little brief discussion on that. Is it solely a space thing or is it a programming thing or is it a combination of those things?
It's a combination. We asked our principals, you know, what can you accommodate for next year? It can be zero, it could be five. You know, they look at the numbers they have in their current grade levels going into the next year. Programming, you know, specifics and then make a determination.
Okay. All right, and I assume that also that their determinations are based in for staffing levels that we're working on and budgeting, which you're going to present to tonight.
Correct. And the reason why you do it tonight is we have to submit this data to the Department of Ed. They publicize it on their website, so anybody can go see how many slots Bellingham might have open. And then parents can make decisions if they want to, you know, go through the, there's an application process for school choice.
Okay, great.
What would happen if you were to have, let's say, five people apply for the fourth grade position? This is line four.
It becomes a lottery. It's a lottery.
And when do people have to apply? When do you have to know?
I believe it's June. We need to know by June, so we can start getting those spots in. Sometimes we let it stay open a little bit longer over the summer because, you know, knowing how hard it is to figure out what your plans are. And if we can accommodate them, we will, so.
If we're planning, we're planning for like next year's staffing and next year's class size based on enrollment figures that we have right now?
Current enrollment figures.
Projected.
Projected enrollment figures based on the number of homeschool individuals we have. So we had our elementary, actually, our secretary called, started to call home to homeschool parents who want to know if they're coming back in the fall. And we started gathering that data, so we're just, we're planning out all those spots.
Okay. I think this committee would be interested in that information too, maybe in a later, for a later discussion, just to, you know, because as we, in fact, I think as in part of your slides.
It is in part of your slides.
All right, so maybe we'll wait till we, okay, great, all right, sorry. All right. Any other questions or discussion for the proposed numbers for school choice availability? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion that we approve the request to create the number of openings for school choice in our district for next year that are outlined in the form that Mr. Morano has given us for today.
So Jen?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second, and that's a fast mark, I wasn't sure what to do.
Ready to go.
Okay. All right.
Budget. So again, if you have questions, by all means.
This is a multimedia event right now.
It is a multimedia event. All right, so our FY22 budget presentation, so we're going to talk about next year, we're going to talk a little bit about this year and some of the challenges we faced and some of the decisions we've got to make, so. It's kind of going forward and backward at the same time. Real quick, I just thought it was important to kind of share our vision statement. This is our new vision statement, this is our strategic plan. We, as I've said probably ad nauseam, all of our decisions run through our vision. Our budgetary decisions, our staffing level, whatever we do needs to fit within our vision statement, right? If it doesn't fit, then we don't move forward with it. And basically what our vision statement is that we need to provide the best educational experience for our kids for every student, no matter what. I won't read through the whole vision statement. Our goals and expectations, again, guides our decision-making process for our budget. We have five pillars that are key to our success along with our core values. And those pillars and values drive our goals and overarching expectations for student learning. So this year has been an enormous challenge with the pandemic, but that has not changed our focus or our commitment to those pillars or those core values. We've in fact, those are more important through this process this year than ever before. And just to share our mission statement again, that one I will read because it's super simple. Dream, achieve, succeed, right? I love that mission statement. It encapsulates everything we're trying to accomplish. Our core values are academic excellence, compassion, perseverance, respect, and safety. I think that sums up exactly what we want our students to walk away with when they graduate from Bellingham. And I love our little graphic that has, you know, encompasses all of those core values along with our five pillars. And at the heart of it all is academic excellence. So again, those five pillars, academic excellence, communication, culture, and climate, right? Those are the first three. So we again want to provide students with all, with an academically stimulating learning experience, but also personalize the education for them and meeting the individual needs. We want to make sure we're promoting high-quality, two-way communication from staff, to students, to parents, and to the town, to be honest. And create an educational culture designed to inspire students and employees to reinforce that our primary academic climate goal is to extend beyond good, but it's for us to be great. That should be our goal all the time. Social and emotional well-being, again, promoting a safe and secure academic physical social environment. If you don't feel safe in where you're learning, you're not going to learn, right? And we want to make sure we teach skills, teach those explicit skills to kids to maximize their opportunities for positive engagement with others. And then our technology use, now more than ever, we've been ramping up our technology use. We want to maximize age-appropriate technology and implement the same so that students and educators are able to progress from using technology to enhance learning and using technology to transform learning. And I believe we've been doing that this year. All right, let's talk a little bit about enrollment, because that's changed significantly. Since 2016, so our enrollment has decreased by 4%. So we had 2,252 students in 2016 to 2,143 in the number of students in 2020. This year, we've seen an additional decrease to 1,925 kids. And that's, I'm going to be honest, it's mainly due to the pandemic. We've had a number of families that, you know, chose school choice because other districts have maybe a different educational model that they preferred or felt better with. We had a number of families that chose homeschooling, because whether they were nervous about the environment or didn't like the hybrid experience or fully remote, they chose to go homeschool, so that really decreased our numbers. We're seeing an uptick back now that we're back full in-person. We've had families already come back from homeschooling, back to in-person already. And we have families that we reached out to and their intent is to come back in the fall from homeschool. So that's really good news. We want those kids back.
Right.
So with all that, even though our population's decreasing, student needs have increased dramatically. And we need to make sure we continue to provide those additional resources to kids so that they can be engaged in their learning. Right back to enrollment, just again, just I want to provide a quick little graph. You can see how the enrollment's declining. In the past, I've showed you the slides from our NASDAQ survey, right, in enrollment. We kind of went off their track a little bit and was actually a little bit higher back, I think it was seventeen, eighteen. We're back on track with them now with the decline, except for this year, obviously, it was a sharp decline. So I'm hoping that that bounces back and we're, you know, in a better trajectory, but we'll have to wait and see.
So do we have a projected number for next year?
Right now, I'm sticking with the 1,925, but anticipating probably getting back to around 2,100.
That's a pretty decent swing, right? That's like 175 if my math serves me correctly.
Crossed.
Okay.
So how does, explain how that delta there would affect, you know, our chapter 75?
So it's still under discussion right now at the state level. So the first pass at the budget, I believe at the governor's budget, was that our chapter 70 would be based off our current enrollment, which we don't want, right? My association, Mass Association of School Superintendents, your association of school committees have penned a letter to the governor saying, enter the Department of Ed, you can't do that to us. You need to go by what our October numbers, I'm sorry, not our October numbers, our previous numbers were in June from last year, to be fair. And not dip our chapter 70 because of this crazy pandemic that happened. So we're still waiting to get more information. They have not solidified the next year's budget yet. And we haven't received any new approval yet, so we're still waiting to hear.
So worst-case scenario would be based on the 1,925, best-case scenario would be based on the 2,143?
Correct.
And could end up somewhere in the middle?
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm hoping that's what happens, you know, best case, we're at 2,143, but I'll take halfway, you know, someplace in the middle. Just a quick slide, we've talked about this before, selected student populations. I just wanted to show you the increase by school year between economically disadvantaged, English language learners, students with disabilities, and then high needs. High needs are any student that falls within those categories, okay? So as you can see, then over the last five years, there's been an uptick in the needs of our kids. So just example, economically disadvantaged, a three and a half percent increase. High-need students from 2016 to now, a 4.7% increase, right? That's significant. Our students have needs and challenges that we need to provide for. And this, I think, shows a great, shows you a great kind of example of how that's happening over the next, over the previous five years. I anticipate that that's going to continue to grow, you know, as we move through this year into next. I show slides of this every year, it's our school attending list. This is the past three years. This represents the number of students that are attending both schools. So we stayed steady at 109 kids over the last three years. We've seen a, we've seen a sharp increase in charter school. I remember just a couple of years ago, we had, they had a huge increase because the charter school in Franklin opened up a lot of slots and we lost a significant amount of kids. This year, we saw another huge spike of kids going to charter. Again, you know, that's concerning. School choice went up, homeschool definitely went up, but our in-state private and out-of-state private schools went down. So the number of kids who were attending those schools or choosing to has gone down significantly over the last three years.
Did charter school, wherever, use the same hybrid model that we had or were there differences?
I believe they were different than what we were providing. So, you know, I think that was probably for some families, you know, a better choice for them, so they decided to go to charter. Any other questions on that, school attending? Now I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Rafferty, she's going to talk a little bit about our five pillars and where does our budget support our strategic plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morano. So the purpose of the next five slides is to provide you with a picture of how this budget supports the goals and initiatives of our strategic plan. In prep, I reviewed the budget submitted by the building principals and the directors as well as the improvement plans from each school to identify where funds were being allocated. For some of the initiatives described in the next five slides, there are also grant funds offsetting the costs and I'll try to highlight those as we go along. So for this first slide, for pillar one, academic excellence is reflected in the budget within areas such as textbooks and instructional materials. So I chose to highlight here the work that we're doing in grades six through eight and the new curriculum materials that we're piloting in the areas of math and history, social science. For professional development, I chose to highlight here the PBL Works Network at the high school. So this is project-based learning, PBL Works is project-based learning. This is also partially grant-funded. And at a future school committee meeting, I'm hoping that Mrs. Lafayette and I can come to talk a little bit more about this network that we are participating in. So in the future, I'd like to highlight and talk a little bit more specifically about that. But also, under professional development, the illustrative math training in the upcoming school year, we're going to be running a book study on the topic of necessary conditions and we're bringing in an outside consultant. And that's to help us and our teachers in building the types of environments we need for students particularly in the secondary math levels to understand and be able to meet the shifts in learning to help prepare our students for the rigor of college and career readiness within the area of math. I also chose to highlight, we're doing some intensive work with specialized reading instruction over the course of the next few years and building our capacity throughout the district with a level of literacy intervention and training our special education teachers at each building with Wilson for specialized reading instruction. I've also highlighted, within the curriculum review process, this year, our curriculum review process was stalled because of the pandemic. But we didn't lose on the opportunity to build capacity to hit the ground running next year. We are preparing for a pretty intensive curriculum review process. Our largest area of English Language Arts will start next year. So this year, the literacy leads throughout the districts, all buildings participated in a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education-sponsored network for evaluating high-quality curriculum materials. And then in FY22 budget, you'll see stipends for the review teams for the English Language Arts review and then bringing the history, social science review back on track. I also chose to highlight some programming within Project Lead the Way and the importance of the work that we're doing growing the engineering and biomedical pathways. And then I wanted to highlight the academic student support personnel. In the upcoming school year, we are planning to have interventionists and tutors at all of our buildings. So this will be essential to our work in mitigating learning loss due to the pandemic. So this is not in an exhaustive list, but rather areas that I've chosen to highlight. And I'll do the same thing for each of the five pillars. So Mr. Morano, if you want to go to the next pillar, thank you. So for pillar number two, communication is reflected in the budget through district technology services. So these are some of the licenses that we have within the district. So you're all familiar with Blackboard Connect and, you know, the calling system that we use to notify our families of important information. We also have things like School Brains, which is our school student information system. State Safe Schools is an online training system that we adopted just two years ago that will continue with our licenses. And that enables us to do a lot of the training online. And it also provides the documentation that we need for people who have completed all of the required and mandatory training so that we don't have to use manpower to track all of that completion. You're also going to see here the Google Workplace for Educators. We're going to continue in the upcoming school year to use Seesaw at preschool through grade two. This is really serving as our platform at the classroom level for communication. The Smores newsletters, licenses, those are an example of what the building principals use on a weekly basis to communicate out to families about important events and happenings at their schools. And then the Family Tech Support Center, that's something that we started this year that we are prepared. The IT department is prepared to continue that for as long as it's needed. And for pillar three, this is our culture and climate pillar. So culture and climate is reflected in the budget within professional development and district technology. I wanted to highlight two pretty significant areas that we'll see investment and funding next year. Our work with Calice Warrenham in our cultural proficiency series will continue next year. And then also our work with Lyle Kirkman. So with Calice Warrenham, this year, our admin team focused on building their capacity and understanding of concepts such as racial microaggressions, implicit bias, modern forms of racism in schools. And the work that we do in the upcoming school year will result in the development of our cultural proficiency vision and in our definition of educational equity within the district. So next year, we are building our plan to take the work that we have done at the admin level and then now that we have built capacity there to extend it out with all of our instructional staff. Our work with Lyle Kirkman at the admin level has focused on our leadership development. Our administrative team competed, completed the WPI, the personal inventory, personality inventory. And we've been examining our leadership competencies to ultimately increase our effectiveness in the coherence of our leadership team. And pillar four, pillar four is our social, emotional, and well-being. And that's reflected within the budget in our instructional materials. We have been building, year by year, grade level by grade level, the implementation of paths, the SEL curriculum. We are up to grade four and next year we'll be adding grade five with those curriculum materials. Later on, we'll also talk about some review work that we're doing with Dr. Chapone to take a look at our structures within the district for our counseling and our student support services in the area of mental health. And this will be part of this pillar as well. We see social, emotional well-being reflected in our professional development. We will be continuing our membership with Mass Partnership for Use. This year, we focused in on student anxiety and self-regulation strategies and will continue to look at impacts of trauma as we move into the upcoming school year. It's reflected also in staffing and stipended positions. You'll see that in the FY22 budget, our RTI, which is Response to Intervention, our PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Supports, and our SEL, which is Social Emotional Learning Teams. Our counseling department staff and the new positions that we have there and also the new social worker position that we'll talk about later in the presentation. We also see this reflected in our district technology services and licenses. Again, that Safe Schools online resource that I had talked about, we have lots of online trainings embedded in there that supports all of our employees across the district. And then programs or licenses such as GoGuardian and the Raptor Emergency Management System. For pillar five, this is technology use and implementation. This I found to be reflected in the budget through district technology services, licenses, and hardware. The one-to-one initiative, the Smart Board Replacement and Upgrade Plan, things like the BMS Music Lab, licenses such as Screencastify, Smart Notebook, Seesaw, Google Workplace for Educators. We also see this in staffing as we think about the Instructional Technology Center at VHS, the high school. Our staffing, the school technology specialists and our integrated technology specialists are really instrumental in this, the implementation of this pillar. And then also the extensive professional development that our IT department has provided on all of the tools within Google Workplace for Educators and, you know, Screencastify and so many more of the licenses and the applications that we've been using throughout this school year. I know that Mr. Garofano has the next slide after this and is going to be speaking further about technology and the work happening in that year. But I just wanted to take a minute to pause here and take any questions. I know that was a lot of information and I just wanted to highlight all of the excitement that's taking place in the district as we get ready for the upcoming school year. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done to really highlight these five pillars and our goals and initiatives within the strategic plan.
Any questions on the five pillars or anything else?
No, I think it's just worth noting to the, you know, not all the things that Mrs. Rafferty highlighted are like new, right? I mean, those are continuations and things that are important and included in the budget, some of the market. We're going to talk about some of the additions to staff, additions to technology. And so I just, I don't want someone that's listening to this kind of for the first time to get the impression like this is all, you know. So it's just kind of a reflection of the budget in totality and some of the important elements of the budget are things that get carried from year to year because they're important, because they're helping.
Exactly.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rafferty.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments in the?
I love seeing the pillar and then the direct connotation to that right next to it. We really tie it together. And I like, I care seeing that too. It reinforces what we're here for and how we get there. I think that's a really great addition to the strategic plan.
I did have one question with Mrs. Rafferty, the highlighted events in each pillar, how much did that change due to the pandemic?
So, I mean, the biggest area would be in sort of the urgency of solidifying those six through eight curriculum materials because of the need to get those online licenses. And then all of the online licenses and technology services, that has been an area that, there was that sense of urgency to build our capacity and really focus in on the professional development and training of our staff. You know, this year, we did, we purchased some courses for all of our core instructional staff to build their capacity to deliver instruction in a blended learning environment. So those are the areas as you go through, and also in the area of communication because we really had to ensure that we had clear and open lines of communications with our families through the pandemic. So things this past year, you know, like that family support center and, you know, the use of BC5. You know, like that family support center and you know, the use of BC five, the Blackboard Connect, that automated system. And all of the the seesaw that license. Was new this year for us, so a lot of the course costs that we incurred were directly related to the pandemic and those areas and our. Our commitment to making sure that we kept those lines of communications open with our families and our students.
I would say in every pillar, there is a component that was ramped up because of the pandemic. Right, across the board, you know, for sure, so. So I think we we had some acceleration of certain things. Which is actually going to make, put us in a better position for next fiscal year.
Yes, so the things that Mrs. Rafferty has highlighted, but also and Mr. Garofano will talk about is our one to one initiative. We were on a five year kind of plan to build on our one to one. We ramped it up a little bit, now with the pandemic, we really ramped it up. And have devices across the district that, you know, that are important, and I don't want us to take a spander. Well, not just into Mark's point, to not just the, not just the the technology of it, but I think before we would get presentations on. You know, utilization of the of the Chromebooks and integration to the classroom. And we were getting pockets that were growing and growing and growing of people using that, and now this thrust upon us. Now, that's the way it's done, that's what it's done, and so there's, you know, some. You know, silver lining, I didn't almost hesitate to use that, but that's some long term benefit. Or maybe not benefit, but takeaway from it, okay. Mr. Garofano?
Okay, good evening, everyone, so I wanted to take just a few minutes to. Highlight some of the technology initiatives that we were able to put in place this year. And as Mr. Morano mentioned. These items that are on this list have allowed us to be. Very close, if not spot on, to a one to one initiative from K through twelve. So over the last several months, few months, we've been able to roll out. A hundred and ninety student Samsung tablets in K one. So we made a decision to go away from iPads. Based on cost, based on licensing, the Samsung tablets are about half the cost. We were able to implement three hundred and twenty additional student Chromebooks in grades two through twelve. And we were also able to roll out a hundred high end teacher Chromebooks throughout all of the schools. And these really allow the teachers to, you know, be able to stream content and deliver synchronous teaching and learning on a much higher level. We were also able to, based on need, really. Able to upgrade our infrastructure. And as previously mentioned by Mrs. Rafferty, the Family Tech Support Center, while. Somewhat dwindling now, it was really a major asset. Certainly a year ago, and even at the beginning of this school year, and it's still open, you know, it's it's a. It's a phone number and it's an email address the parents can take advantage of if they need. You know, need help at home with school owned technology or or school supported software. So I feel good about, you know, where we are.
We lost them. It's ironic, the director of technology, why would?
Meaning all of the devices, whether they're Chromebooks, Windows, Mac, whatever. So I feel very confident that we're, you know, we're moving in the right direction.
Any questions on those technologies? Alright, so I'm sorry that just because we've had so many accelerations and different, so where are we in regards to one to one?
We're, we're, we're there, I mean, we're. We're there right now.
Okay. I think you're frozen, Mike.
How about now?
There we go.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're out of one, we're currently at one to one. And and this just coming summer, you know, as you know, we're, you know, we're on a lease program. With with the majority of our Chromebooks. And we'll be having, well, we have a major refresh coming up this summer too, most of which will occur at the middle school, so. That that continues to be a big part of what we, what we do as well to keep everything fresh and up to date.
Any, any other questions on that? Yeah, I don't think so, but I think would be a great discussion point for for a future meeting to, you know, to focus on. Implementation and maybe some of the positive takeaways from, you know, from faculty and from families that. That this will leave with us, you know, moving, moving forward, you know, some of the success stories, I would, I would enjoy that, so absolutely.
Alright, so let's get to the next slide. Let's talk a little bit, a little bit more meat potatoes here, around funds. So I want to just capture a little bit around FY twenty one into twenty two. So through FY twenty one, we've been incredibly fortunate that we've seen additional funding from the state and federal government. And those funds really were your help with our health and safety protocols through the pandemic. And also to think about what potential learning gaps kids might have and provide some resources. We also had an additional incredibly very fortunate opportunity to receive a one point five million dollar override. At the last, at the end of last year from the county, which again incredibly fortunate to be able to utilize those funds. So with all of those factors, and we'll go over the state and federal government. Funds that we received along with the override and some really prudent spending this year, right? Right now, we have around seven hundred thousand dollars in our current. Before I move on too far from that, I just want to talk a little bit about the position we created this year because of the pandemic, I think it's important to know. So remember, we started off in this hybrid model where we have. Half our students coming in on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday was a full remote, Thursday was the other cohort group, we did that across the board. And we needed to make sure we had six foot distancing and a lot of different measures. So we recognized that we needed additional staff to make that happen. But the high school, we filled an additional history teacher position because of the numbers in that, in that course, in that course. Additional ILAs to help support students in the classroom and to help support just the general. Work that happens every day. At BMS, we had a fifth grade teacher, a sixth grade ELA, sixth grade MAP, two additional ILAs. Stalbrook grade two teacher, grade three special ed teacher, two ILAs. The Petro, two grade two teachers. And at district wide, ten building subs, so those are people that were designated. For that particular building, so two at the high school, two at BMS. And then we also had a remote learning coordinator because on top of having the hybrid plan, we had students that were full remote. So we had a remote learning coordinator that would help, almost like a liaison between staff, parents, principal, help coordinate some of those pieces. So all those positions are really important and we utilized our. Funding from the pandemic to help support that. So again, critical. So we have this additional, you know, funds that we have in the budget. So we have some one time expenditures that we think are really important for this, this year to set us up for, to be in a really good place for next year. Our smart boards at the elementary and memorial school are roughly fifteen years old, they don't make them anymore. We can't find parts for them, they're incredibly old, software is old, so it's time to update those smart boards. Mr. Garofano and the tech department were able to get one into the district and had our teachers try it. Experiment with it, it's a much better smart board, this, we're going to use two hundred and fifty thousand from that seven hundred. To replace, I believe it's sixty seven, right, Mr. Garofano, sixty seven smart boards throughout the district.
That's correct, sixty seven, yeah.
K through.
Five.
If you buy, this would have been a capital request for November, but because we have funding, we want to prove that precious now. Again, we'll have that complete over the summer, so when we start the new school year. Every teacher will have a new smart board, state of the art, that will help support their kids. In this new, moving forward in their learning, right, it's a help with the new kind of place that we are at. The other piece that we want to replace is a lighting transformer at BHS, that's about a hundred thousand dollars. The one that's there now was no longer operational. So we can't really control the lighting system in there, and we use that almost every day, our fine arts department uses it, we have music programs that happen, theater events that happen, just for our school.
Substantial rental income when, right?
Exactly, and it's rented throughout the year, which brings significant funds into the district. We can't rent it without this lighting, this transformer. This again would have, was going to be a capital request. And after discussion with Mr. Brain, we decided to utilize our funds to make that happen. We also have unemployment costs, right, so those positions I highlighted the previous slide. Those were one year positions, right, again, six foot distance and hybrid remote. Moving into next year, we don't need all those positions, and I'll show some of the positions that we're looking for, but those positions we no longer need going into next year. So. With those, eliminating those positions, there's unemployment that we're going to incur because of that. So that's a continuum of about two hundred and twenty six thousand, worst case scenario. So if someone finds a position somewhere else, there won't be, obviously, employment costs of that, but that's where baseline would be if everyone was yet unafforded.
Alright, just while we're on that slide too, like there's two components of that 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 are supportive of the of the town. The financial, right, because by doing the smart boards and finding a way because of, you know, fiscal restraint and. And responsibility during the very challenging year, that we're in the position that we're in, right? So that's two hundred and fifty thousand that you pointed out that it will not have to be asked for from the town for in the form of a capital request, right? And similarly, the unemployment costs, right, these are town employees, right, including district employees. And that's a way that the the school district is able to help self support that it costs that would otherwise be incurred by the town, correct, okay. I think it's important for people to understand that when we're looking at the interplay between our budget and the responsibilities of the of the, you know, the community at large, so.
So additionally, we want to add some, some funding around first, the district wide social work. I think this position is critically important for this year and into next. This position will help this person, will help get our students reengaged in their schools and their classrooms, right? The social worker can provide support, parental support, referrals to other agencies, parent resources like mask help, as we know, we still have. But there are still families that are struggling because they haven't been able to go back to work or there's been other things that have happened. And they'll also be available for additional in school counseling needed. So this position is that, I think, very important to help bridge that SEL gap. From, you know, we have some kids who haven't been in a classroom. Went over four months, you know, and you can't just pick up and go back to school, it's going to be a challenge. This person can help bridge that gap and provide resources for families, which I think is critical. Also, a licensed practical nurse, again, really important, it's going to help our nurses this year in completing pool testing and bring all of our students back. For many of them back. Any additional health concerns that may came up, may come up over this this year into next. And to help provide coverage if needed, if the nurse isn't in, or there needs to be additional supports. This got the, Mrs. Lock the seal approval, so I'm comfortable presenting it tonight. I hope she laugh. But again, really important as we move forward. Then additionally, academic tutors, and this is Rafferty talking a little bit about this in one of the previous slides. We want to increase the number of tutors at BMS, right now we have two ELA and two for MAP. We want to bump that up to three. That way they can provide some more additional small group tutoring, more opportunities for kids to access them for support. And be more efficient in the tutoring process. Also, we want to add ELA and MAP tutors at BHS to create an academic drop in so that students who may be struggling or need that additional support throughout the school year. That could be accessed, not this year, but the next year, from wind block, a study. Before school, after school, we'll work out in logistics, but that will provide support throughout his school. We already have tutoring that's available at the elementary levels and comfortable where we are. Any, any questions on any of those items, I think they're really, was a really important that for this year into next.
Maybe you can talk about the the tutors, you know, can't, because I know, you know, this planner and I were going through some of these, you know, budget. Pre-budget meetings, right, and discussions, right, and we, we have great concern over gaps and and. You know, as good a job as I think the district has done in creating a hybrid situation, we expect that there's going to be gaps and we want to give kids. Chance to catch up as quick as possible, move moving forward. It's, but you know, you've explained to me before, and I think it's worthy of discussion now too, that. You know, there's kind of a fine line between how many tutors are helpful and how much time there is in the day to provide services to students during the course of the day. So, because again, what our concern was, are we going enough in that, in that area considering the gaps we expect to see?
So I remember you, you guys asking about, I think that was, was. Some really good points, and it caused us to have, you know, big back and reflect on the budget, and we talked about it back in January, right? And that's why we added these academic tutors. But there is a line, right, so we can add, I can add twenty tutors, right, right? But there's only so much time in the day. And we have to be really careful about how we use tutors, right, so the point is to take kids out of class. You know, I'm going to take you out of that class to give you remediation in math. What's happening, you're missing all the content in math, so now that gap actually grows even wider. So the point of the tutors, yes, there'll be some opportunities during free periods that they can access for. We also would use those tutors to push into classrooms, right, to create small groups in those classes where kids need some, need help. And support them there, so they're getting the current content and accelerating their learning through the process. When we talk about tutors, it's about accelerating learning, not about remediation.
Okay.
That helpful?
Yeah, no, definitely, and also in relation to some good experience we've been having in the memorial school as well.
Yes, right, so we've changed. We've changed that model at the memorial school this year, and it's working very, very well with our literacy map. Just a quick question, the gaps and MCASTs need to be addressed, absolutely. So when we talk about the the skills that kids need, it's around those academic components that relate back to MCASTs. Right, but it's not all about MCASTs, right, it's about learning the standards, mastering those standards that the kids need in order to move forward. That's, that's the ultimate goal, okay?
Alright, and so, and you're comfortable with the, with these positions you've outlined and the number of academic tutors that we're building in. And on again, and nothing's perfect, you can't, we understand you can't look into crystal ball, but. But based on the information you have presently available, that this can help lead us to successful, you know, summer mediation and driving performance when we get back.
Yep, but I'm not done yet, there's more. Additional positions for twenty two, some of these we talked about last year, so we have a, right now we have a assistant principal at BMS, we want to continue that position. Moving forward, a BCBA, a board certified behavior therapist, that's, we want to add that from twenty one into twenty two, again, important. We want to stick with our building substitutes. I think that really helped this year. Now I know that it wasn't perfect, we had, because of. Close contact, virus exposure. We had at times many staff that were out and we couldn't possibly cover every classroom the way we wanted to. So that was a real challenge. And then we moved into this period where people are getting their vaccination and we're finding people with, you know, side effects from the vaccine. And we had no control on when people would get them, so then again, it created these days where we had many staff out. And we're trying to do the best we can to cover courses, so that was really tough. And we hired, like I said earlier, ten building substitutes plus our regular sub crew. There's not a whole lot of subs out there, so every district struggled with this in the same way. If you recall, there were days when we had to go full remote because we didn't have enough staff.
Even, even with that model, right?
So I think going into next year, having building subs in every building is going to be important for us to help again, cover courses and provide support we need. So I want to continue that process.
Would you say on a consistent basis that they were, there was a near full utilization of the subs?
Was, I'm sorry?
What would you say in a, we consistently need that number, is that the right number?
Every day.
Okay, yeah, alright, that would qualify as consistent, yeah.
There was no, no doubt those subs were being utilized to their fullest capacity every day.
Okay.
And I anticipate that will be the case in the fall.
Okay.
So you don't think, if we had those building substitutes, say, two years ago, pre pandemic, would would we have full utilization now as well?
Probably. Okay, yeah, we had, we had building subs years ago and we utilized them, uh, they, they were. You know, they were really needed, and, and again, from some, this was before I was superintendent. From some budgetary issues, those are positions that we eliminated, were in place now that I think. One, it's important to bring back because of the pandemic, and two, it's gonna help support um going forward our initiative.
Could, could, and I, I hate to go too deep down the hole, but you're, you're ma- you're doing great, you've made it through about twenty-something of these slides already. Um, can you talk about the benefit of the long-term subs as far as having its continuity? Um, with, within the building too, is, is there some economies there as well, when it's not, when you're not bringing in, you know, new people every time to cover positions?
Absolutely, you know, these are people that the staff and the students get comfortable, they know who they are. And they know the content and the, and what needs to be done throughout the day, so there is benefit of having dedicated subs to our buildings.
Okay.
Um. And, and we'll do a cost of, you know, cost benefit analysis from point to see if it's, if it's more cost-effective to have dedicated building subs. Or do we go back to, you know, down the road, do we go back to that process that we've had in the past, right, where we do a calling every day to build permission? I'm gonna think that having dedicated building subs is gonna be more cost-effective. Down the road, so we'll provide that too.
Alright, thank you.
Uh additionally, grade four through seven, uh, we're going to add a technology integration feature. Uh again, very important, grade six, special education teacher. We wanna keep that high school history teacher in the three ILAs. So those are positions that we've had in twenty-one, we're gonna move into twenty-two. Additional positions for twenty-two. Grade one teacher at Stalberg, grade three teacher at Petro. Those positions do two things for us, reduce our class size, right, so we can. Again, provide targeted uh interventions for kids in a smaller setting. And two, provide smaller settings for kids uh in, in regards to the pandemic in the valley. It keeps us at a, at a more comfortable distance than having a larger classroom, the two, two important things. I mentioned the literacy and math interventionist uh for BMS. We also wanna add a media specialist at BMS, that position will help with technology. Re- uh, research skills for our sixth and seventh graders, literacy skills, there's a lot of different components that again will help. A school psychologist at the Petro, right now we have a person that is the team chair and school psychologist. All our other buildings have people. Uh, they're a larger school, uh, our elementary school in districts, so we think you need to have that split, it's just pretty much for one person. I mentioned the LPM, the social worker, ILAs, and again, two is at the high school, um, that will help support. Um, I know it says nineteen point five hours, we're actually gonna bump that to full-time positions.
These are all very exciting, so I'm just gonna raise a point now so that we can circle back to what I wanna talk about. You know, as we, if we try to consistently talk about sustainability too, right, um. You know, kinda look, trying to look into the two, three, four years down the road, then to that. You know, we don't wanna, if we're adding things that we're not gonna be able to sustain later, so, but, but I, but I think we ought to get through the whole thing first and then go back. You know, cause uh, we'll see where we are money, money-wise, right?
Right, so some of these positions really are one-year uh for next, for FY twenty-two. But um again, reducing the class sizes, providing those interventions, you know, keeping kids, you know, the smaller cohort. Um, after next year, it will reassess, if we need to continue with them, we'll come back and ask. If we don't, we would eliminate them, but I think positions that we definitely wanna keep. That LPM, that social worker, the school psychologist, media specialist, position, those are, those are important for us next year, but into the future, right? Again, we'll assess as we grow.
Yeah, no, well, the thing is, every single one of those, if you, that's on this page, you know, are critical importance right now in dealing with, with aftermath of what we're, we're dealing with.
There, there's a great question in the chat about uh pay increase for subs. We are looking for that, looking at that, we are actually gonna come to the next school committee meeting to request a pay increase for us. Right now, we have a tiered system, it's cumbersome, we just wanna create a, a flat rate for our subs. Licensed or unlicensed, and we'll get into more details with that next.
Okay.
Okay. I, I, I felt like I needed to talk a little bit about the new positions we created this year from the override funds that we received. And this is just a smattering of them, uh, real quick. We created a word language position at BMS for students in grade six and seven, so they were able to get French and Spanish. So they had exposure to foreign language before they get to the high school. We talked really quickly, uh, not next year, but the year after, we wanna look at how can we provide it for grades point five. I'm a firm believer that kids who are, kids exposed to foreign language at younger ages. Do better, not just in that foreign language, but in, in school in general. So there's, and the research that supports that. We have a esteemed teacher at BMS, uh, this current year, again, providing science, technology, engineering, art in math. Um, next year, they'll be introducing Project Lead the Way course in engineering for middle schoolers, grade sixty-seven. And this will help lead into that project-based learning that, that, this is Rafferty mentioned earlier. The art position at B, at BHS, uh, we had students, you know, roughly two hundred kids who weren't able to get an art, a art class. This position mitigates that issue, you know, our kids have more opportunities to art, which they absolutely love. We hired two school adjustment counselors, BMS and BHS, again, to provide more support for students and families. And I just wanna talk a little bit about, real quick, Project Lead the Way at the high school, which was mentioned earlier. The expansion of that, we have our engineering courses that are available uh this current year, providing to be expanding the biomedical for the fall. Um, we're also looking to apply for an innovation pathway during the department event in the coming weeks. In engineering, so that will provide kids a pathway to some certifications when they graduate with internship. Uh, we'll come back, go into more detail, but it's a really exciting opportunity for us students to be able to participate. If they're interested in engineering, we'll build additional pathways as we go.
And, and when we're talking about this, so when, um, you know, it's important to. You know, when we, when we were projecting those and adding those in, right, it was, you know, it all circles back to, we were looking at. You know, kids going to charter school, kids going to bulk schools, right? And trying to make sure that we're providing opportunities that the students in our communities, uh, in our community expect and, and need and deserve, right? And that, you know, when you look at those positions, that is clearly targeted by, by not just, okay, we added an art teacher, but that also gave great flexibility. Why, for a variety of different mediums of art, right, right, and so it's not just, uh, you know, a drawing and painting class. And then it gives the flexibility to offer, you know, photography and some other things that we haven't, you know. Um, and then the technology as well to, that it just seems to me to be growing to all different areas and giving kids a real opportunity to be exposed. To that type of education in that field, frankly, to, to help make them. Uh, make decisions, conscious decisions about what they wanna pursue academically or in the job force after they, they leave here. You know, those are some, in the world language thing, again, trying to get, uh, you know, more interest there, more opportunity. Drive that so that when kids get into the higher grades in the high school, then maybe we have more kids that go to the, the highest level of study in that, in that. In that language, and those are all exciting things that begin to be, uh, hope to be bearing fruit. For our students and also to circle back to retain more students from the community and, and building that.
And so it's good, it's good to pull it backwards, it provides those kids the opportunities to experiment with those courses and get some understanding. But, and I mentioned this with the world language, but, and there's, again, a lot of study that supports this, students that are exposed to world languages early. Art, music, do better in school in general. And that's, again, that's what we want, right?
Right.
We want our kids to have a robust um learning experience across the board.
Right.
And these positions lend to that uh dramatically, so we're really excited about these, you know. Just reflecting on these positions that we did this year with the override ones. You know, I, my heart says, you know, th- these were, these are excellent and I'm so proud of them. Um, but I struggle a little bit because this year we had the pandemic, and it was hard to fully grasp. The, the, the benefit of these classes until we can get back to some normalcy and have our kids in there every day. You know, getting exploited in these courses and getting excited about. Right, so you, you can see we have kids getting exposure in, in the arts and world languages, but also in technology, which is a huge. In the growth field right now, that kids need to be really prepared for the new out.
And we, we didn't even talk about the, um, the, I'm sorry that I can't remember the name, but the manufacturing collaborator that, that we're part of too, right? They've got that course and study as well.
So I'm part of Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium, so we work collaboratively to create courses. Throughout our districts that other districts can participate in, so. Um, last year, we had three students who took manufacturing. Uh, technology at the educational hub in Whitensville through, uh, through, um, Expert High School. They loved it, great experience. This year, we have kids that are taking cybersecurity course through, um, Polis, uh, no, Fokdale, I'm sorry, Fokdale. Uh, we also have a student who's taking welding course through the Ed Hub. Um, uh, from the high school. We're developing, every year, we're trying to develop more and more, more courses that, that all of us are doing, that's to share our resources.
That's great, very exciting, okay, I didn't mean to slow you down, but I thought that that's an important point.
Alright, I'm gonna, I've talked a lot, I'm gonna turn it over to this fellow.
Hello, everybody. I would um just like to get started um. To describe some of the additional COVID funds that we've received or will be receiving. Um, to help offset the costs of all of the PPEs that have been required. Um, the, the technology, um, some of the high-quality summer learning programs. Um, increases in transportation costs and um all other sort of costs that come along with. Um, that have come along with COVID. So. Funds that we had to utilize by December thirtieth of this fiscal year. Were the CARES Act funds that came in through the town, we were allocated a portion of that, about five hundred thousand dollars. And then we also had about thirty-two thousand dollars that helped us with some hotspots and remote learning devices. Along with those funds, we received three different sets of grants. That all needed to be, or need to be completely expended by June thirtieth of this year. We had the school reopening grant of about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That one has really helped us supporting additional staffing needs. We had some, uh, con- uh, we had a contracted service, um, custodial contractor come in to help. With some cleaning over the summer. We have had um custodian overtime charged in here. Uh, some of the costs of our building substitutes were charged to this account. All of our PPEs really, I believe, are consolidated very heavily between the CARES Act earlier. And this, uh, the CBR, CBRF fund. Uh, and then we also received the state coronavirus prevention grants. And the earmark technology grant. And the state coronavirus fund, we are looking at, again, more technology, more P. PPE, some additional staffing. And the technology and safety grant, more technology. And those funds will be fully expended before June thirtieth. So hopefully, these COVID funds are not ending in June. Uh, we have other funds that are, will be able to utilize beyond that time period. So we did receive a smaller grant, summer vacation virtual learning grant. Uh, the deadline to spend those funds is in August, and that is for high-quality summer learning programs. That was just the very beginning of funds that came in that were really earmarked at looking at, um. At kids and trying to help them um catch up with any of the learning that they had lost due to the closure. We also received the S R one funds of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those funds we will need to utilize prior to September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. And we will also be receiving S R two funds of about six hundred thousand dollars. That will be able to utilize into two thousand twenty-three. So those funds um will really help offset the budget and really capture. A lot of the extra costs that have come up due to COVID. Uh, the total costs that we've received so far, that we know we will be receiving so far, is about one point nine million dollars. Now, on top of that, we will be receiving um an S R three allocation. The last communication that we received from the state house estimates that this will be approximately one point four million dollars. I don't have a lot of information on um how these funds are to be utilized. But I, I believe that they will, it will be much the same as the other COVID funds that we've received to date. Um, as far as timing, I don't know what the timeframe will be to utilize those either. But again, this is.
That S R three is based on the la- the latest stimulus funds from the federal government. So it's, the state's getting around, what was it, eight or nine billion dollars? Uh, and they haven't identified how to use the money yet, but we know it's coming.
Right, right, so this is, these have really, really helped support um. Our needs and our budget through, through this fiscal year and will continue to do so beyond. And then, so the next slide, what I wanted to highlight for you is um. Other grants that we receive, a lot of these we receive yearly, um, some of them are competitive, some of them are allocations. But I really wanted to highlight how we do supplement our budget. Um, we have about one point one million dollars of non-COVID-related grants that we are utilizing for this fiscal year. That number, it averages pretty much the same. Um, a, a big increase this year that we haven't had in prior years is the Green Communities Grant. Uh, this is shared with the town, but the first round of funding that we received of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, was to um. Replace some of the indoor and outdoor lighting at our high school. To capture more energy savings, which would then reduce our energy budget um going forward. So that was a great opportunity for us to be able to get some of that work done. Some of the work we're looking at in the future for that, for the Green Communities, is um possibly. Looking at some building envelopes and some boilers, just to see if we can help um. Really get some, um, some savings, um, more savings with our, with our energy. Uh, other grants that we receive each year is the two forty IDEA, the Federal Special Education Grant. That's about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that one does support a number of salaries within our district. Um, and another large one is the Title I Grant. And while that one doesn't support individual salaries, that offers a lot of stipend opportunities for. Our staff, as well as that we offer a lot of tutoring um through Title I as well. And along with our grants, we also are very fortunate to be able to offset our budget with several different revolving accounts. And uh, one of the most significant accounts, which we have talked about before, is Circuit Breaker, uh, which allows us to. To really support our services to students with severe disabilities. Uh, funds that we receive um from the Commonwealth of Mass. We are required to spend within two fiscal years. So, which is helpful for us with the budgeting process, because we know, um. We know how much money that we're going to spend the following year um to help offset our special ed budget.
So, go through the, the process of, of the circuit breaker, cause its name kinda gives it away about how it works and.
Yeah, circuit, the circuit breaker is a very odd name for this, this, um, this, these funds. But a very broad overview is that um each student that we have. Uh, we capture all the costs of the student, whether they're in district or out of district, uh, based on their IAPs. And the state gives us a threshold, if the threshold is forty-two thousand dollars. Any dollar amount that we spend on these students above and beyond the threshold. We are then eligible for reimbursement at a certain percentage. Um, the highest percentage we usually get back is about seventy-five percent, and that's what we hope to get every year. Um. We don't, uh, we don't always hit that goal, but many times we have. And um another positive uh piece of the Circuit Breaker funding. Is that we are now eligible to capture um. Trans, uh, special ed, special education transportation costs as well, which we were not able to include. Um, originally with the cost per student um to meet these thresholds, so that's pretty exciting. We may see our Circuit Breaker funds uh go up in the next couple of years.
And that's actually a dramatic increase, right, including, including transportation.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, the, there's a couple of other large revolving accounts that we have, one is school choice. Uh, we do receive funds for the, the students to tuition into our schools. And these funds are typically um put aside and we do pay some salaries out of those. Um, we have our school lunch cafeteria account, which is fully funds our cafeteria program. Um, on a traditional year, so that pays for the entire lunch program as well as the salaries um with. Within that program. We have the KEO Memorial Academy Tuition. We have the KEO Memorial Academy Tuition Account. That revolving account is almost, I'd say it's very close to being fully funded. With the exception of some salaries that are captured in the budget. We receive those funds from tuitions from sending towns of students who are attending KEO Memorial. And we do pay for quite a few salaries out of that account as well. We also pay for building maintenance out of there um and supplies and materials and other, other pieces that otherwise we would be paying out of our, out of our budget. Um another large account that we utilize is our building rental and custodial detail account. Those go hand in hand. We receive significant funds for rentals for our buildings. We pay a couple of salaries out of there and for our custodial staff. Um and we are looking to utilize those funds moving forward to really look at different needs our buildings have for maintenance, to be able to use the revenue that we received in this fund to, to help really improve our buildings. And then we have other, you know, smaller accounts that, that help offset our budgets. And as of, as of right now, our total revolving accounts, we have about 1.9 million dollars. So between the grants and the revolving accounts, um we do have a significant amount of funds that we do help to offset our budget. Does anybody have any questions more on the revolving accounts or on the grants? I went through those pretty fast. I want to make sure that that it's clear to everybody.
If I can just write down real quick, so these are typical ones that we have in our budget to offset, right, or that to offset our budget. The difference is those COVID funds that the S R funds, we typically, we don't have those.
Right.
So those are additional, you know, this year and into the next two, two years to end.
Two plus years, some of the funds, yes.
Sorry, no, that's alright. So we, we have an additional revolving account that we added this year. Where does that show off?
So we have an additional revolving account. I did not put that on here and I apologize because as of right now, there's no balance in that account. Um but we do have an additional revolving account called our special education reserve account. And we are hoping to be able to utilize that this year to put, um to allocate some funds in that account, which we then would be able to utilize in a specific year if we have a much higher than anticipated cost of our special ed costs, specifically with our out of district tuitions. And I'm actually speaking a little bit more about that in the upcoming slides. But um I'm, I'm very, very thrilled actually that we have this new account. And I think it will really, really be a benefit to our school department, especially if we do get any of the unanticipated costs.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this?
I think it's as we, I think we take for granted talking about revolving funds because we do it often, but you know, it's important to understand that these are set up for a specific person, purpose as a, as a, as a venue for or then, or a forum, I guess, for money to come in related to that. You know, for that opportunity, whether it's rental fees or whether it's athletic fees, or whether it's school lunch fees. And then the money in this, receiving that fund is used in those individual programs. So it should be a clearinghouse thing of money in, money out, put on various.
Great example of circuit breaker. That money is only used in special ed, right? And, and, and we utilize those funds every year to offset the special ed costs that I have district places. Right, so it's, it's purely, or just on every one of these accounts, that's purely what they're, they're created.
Right. And they're a moving target. That's why we're saying is there's money coming in and money going out, and that's the way they should function. That's what, that's what it's there for, so.
Correct. So one of the, the items that I wanted to discuss tonight was our special education five-year look back. Uh one of the questions that had been asked at an earlier budget meeting was what do our budget versus expended numbers look like for our special ed out of district tuitions? So I put together a quick chart for you. And over the last five years, um our actual expenditures, with the exception of this current year, um have exceeded our original budget cost. And this is due to the changing nature of this, the needs of the students during the year. So in 2017, we had about an 11% difference between actual expenditures and original budget. In 2018, we had a 10% difference. 2019, we had a 12% difference. 2020, it did shrink, we had a 6% difference. And this year in 2021, we are projecting to have to spend about 8% less in tuition than what we had originally budgeted. So there are many, many reasons why this may happen, but I thought this was very interesting to go back and look. Um there's often been many questions about about our special ed out of district tuition, the number of students we have going out, how that corresponds with our expenditures. And while we have exceeded, while the expenditures traditionally have exceeded, they've been, they've been pretty close. There hasn't been a year that we have had any catastrophic changes. But I will, I will state that those catastrophic changes could happen at any point. Um if we get a new student in or two new students in, in one year that we have not anticipated for, we could look at increased costs from 50,000 to 350,000 dollars. And that would be the point where this special ed reserve account really, really would really enable us to be able to capture those extra costs without having to utilize funds or reallocate other funds from the budget that otherwise would be utilized directly in the classroom for all of our students.
You know, this is, this is really helpful and interesting and informative. I, I do have a question, hopefully it's not a super question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. How, how does this relate and does this factor in circuit breaker too? So when you talk about actual expenditures, right, how does that relate to our actual exposure?
So this does take into account circuit breaker, but you can consider that almost as a net zero effect because we include circuit breaker when we budget. And then we utilize those circuit breaker funds when we expect, when we do the actual.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So even though, you know, you're close, you're still looking at 150 to 200,000 dollars a year potentially. Or historically, where we, where we had a shortfall in special, special ed. So that, that obviously did affect the rest of our budget because we needed to take funds out of that budget and cover those costs. So we did better this year, and that's where that revolving account is going to help us. Where we won't have that, that exposure that we've had over the previous years.
You are correct, yes.
Well, the other thing is there is, I don't know, I can't, I can only see somebody people on the screen, but you know, when, when this Lawrence comes in to give her presentation, right? I mean, that part of the reason we did the five-year look back then too is it, it, it does wildly fluctuate, right? And it does create cause for concern and, and it's, you know, a little bit of a sticker shock when we, when we go through it, but it goes to bear out how um you know, that's, your projections are coming in pretty darn close to what they are, so.
Yes, they are. So one of, um one of the pieces I wanted to speak about regarding the out of district tuitions that goes back to the Special Education Stabilization Fund is that historically, we have built our out of district budget, including all potential placements that are known at the time of the original budget build. So this has really allowed us to maintain a budget that's close to our actual needs during the year. Depending on our utilization of the Special Education Stabilization Fund, we may be able to reduce the amount of potential students that we physically budget for, taking into account that prior years we have had additional expenditures. But we could reallocate funding to further support our strategic plan when we are building our budget. So this specialized, uh the Special Ed Stabilization Fund could help us twofold. One is to help us budget more on actual placements at the time of the budget built and reduce the number of potentials. And also capture any additional costs. And I believe that both of those will really help further spending in the classroom and for all of the students.
Can I just address one question that came up in the chat? Uh teacher training and out of district. Too far, I'm sorry. Um just around, you know, providing staff with additional training so we don't have as many out of district placement. So we do provide a lot of training for our staff around, um you know, special ed needs, co-teaching. Pretty much begin, the, the, the students that end up going out of district, and Mrs. Lawrence or Mrs. LeVron can talk more to this, uh really need a, a higher level of service than we can provide or other districts can provide. So it's really a specialized uh school that these kids are heading, that we, again, we can't meet their needs. It could be a medical issue, it could be an intense special education issue. So forth. Mrs. Lawrence, if you wanna.
Sure, abso- absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Morano. What we have found in recent years, over the last at least three years consecutively, the number of students that have not been able to be to access general ed or access curriculum or access education within the general uh public school setting I have multiple disabilities. Most often, they are struggling with some significant mental health, social, emotional, coupled with learning disabilities and some neurologically based disabilities, along with children with medical fragile needs for whom um public education just cannot meet their needs and provide them with the level of education that they require. It's a, it's a high, it's a small number of children with high significant needs. Uh we do have programs in district that we have, you know, certainly tailored made. Um our children with autism diagnoses and autism spectrum disabilities. 99% of those students are, are being educated within our public schools. Students with cognitive disabilities are being educated within our public schools. These are very complex uh students with complex disabilities. So I, I am, and yes, you're right, we do need to continue to train our special educators to work with all students. But again, we recognize there, for whom there are a small number of uh students within our community whose needs far exceed the ability of a public school program, even with the tailored-made highly specialized programs we have.
That was a great question that we got, so thank you for.
Thank you.
Uh this is Marcelo, talk about transportation.
Sure, so. Yep, so along with our out of district tuitions, another cost is our out of district transportation. The cost each year for this is primarily driven by a student's IEP specialized transportation needs. And as you can see from this chart, back to FY20, the, we, uh the cost, the, excuse me, the expenditures versus budget was very close. Um FY21, you can see was an anomaly. Uh that was due to the closure, the early closure, and we did realize some savings um for the year uh with our out of district transportation providers. And then in this current year, we're projecting um an increase of our special specialized transportation. And again, that is due to the students' IEPs. But we are anticipating that the cost will be closely will come close to what is budgeted as in prior years.
Is it also high because of the nature of the, um the regulations for how far kids need to be apart early on?
Yes, yes, yes. Um the, the transportation cost for FY22, we're expecting, or actually FY22, that's correct. To look differently because we've had to put on more buses and more, the transportation companies are adhering to those COVID guidelines. So the number of kids being transported to one particular program might be less, and they've had to put on a couple extra routes. So that's also going to be an impact as we move forward. We're seeing some of those transportation regulations being relaxed now. So we'll, you know, we'll know as we get a little bit closer toward the end of the school year.
We've also found that some of the companies have included some extra charges to their current runs based on you know, the COVID requirements for cleaning and disinfecting in between runs for each, for each student.
I did have a question. Does this, does this projected budget for just FY22 factor in the changes to the circuit breaker where the transportation costs are reimbursed as part of that?
Uh this, it has not been factored in yet. Uh that is a very good question. Because this is so new, um the state so far has collected in collected information from us regarding transportation, but we have not seen any funds back yet. And so they've told us that the money will be coming, but we have no guarantee as to how much if it will be anywhere near the reimbursement rate of the tuitions or, um, you know, or, or if it will be another whole year before this happens because of the state's reallocation of funding for other decreased revenues. So we did not take into account any of the possible additional circuit breaker funds for transportation at this time.
Right, but those circuit breaker funds can be used over two fiscal years, so it, it, you know, we, we can just carry it forward if needed.
Yes, yes. If we do receive funds for circuit breaker within this school year, we would then utilize those funds as part of the FY23 budget.
Thank you.
Yep. So our next, my next analysis is for in-district transportation. And this is primarily for our contracted company, the company that we work with for our contracted transportation. It includes our late buses, uh our vocational buses, along with our transportation for homeless students and foster children. And this, uh these numbers are driven primarily by contractual increases. Um and any fluctuations between expended versus budget is typically due to the number of late buses or a change in the number of vocational buses or whatnot. Uh but our, our known cost for our in-district transportation is covered by a contractual price per year. Which, let me say, it, it can, not to say that it, it would not fluctuate if we required an additional bus for an additional route. But the base contract is known, the dollar amount is known. If I just confused you with that, please let me know and I'd be happy to, uh, to clarify.
I think we've, well, we've talked about transportation was such a tough issue during the course of the, you know, the shut gas and the limited service and was such a novelty and difficult issue confronted by communities all over the, all over the Commonwealth and you know, it'd be nice to get back to normal next year, frankly, so. And again, and everybody should understand, we've negotiated ourselves the best contract that we believe we put the town in the best position to, um, to be in. Um and tried to get some benefit from a longer term contract to lock in, uh, you know, some consistency from year to year. And, you know, there's certain advantages and disadvantages to it, but um we think that we try to put the town in the, as competitive a position as possible to do that. And so.
And I, I have to agree with Mr. Reed there that, like, we, we minimized our risk by having that long-term contract. You know, with a lot of school districts, saw huge increases in transportation costs and because their contract was up. We had a longer contract, so it worked to our, it definitely worked to our advantage.
It absolutely did. Yes, thank you, Mr. Flannery.
So you can thank me for the next couple of slides, because I don't think we, we've ever presented really around natural gas, energy use. I thought it was important for you to see. Yeah, it is a, it's a portion of our budget that can be significant, so it's important for you to have.
So these, these next two slides are really, a really high-level overview of our usage, the breakdown of our usage each year for both natural gas and for electricity. So I'm sure it comes as no surprise that the high school is our highest user of natural gas, uh followed by the memorial school and then stall. Uh, followed by the Memorial School and then Stalbrook, DePietro and so forth. We are, as we are utilizing, um, different funding sources, going back to the grant conversation with green energy and whatnot. I am projecting that the usage, um, these charts may look a little bit differently next year. If we are really able to capture some energy savings, um, we can reduce both our spend and our, um. The thermes used for the natural gas. So this first one, we spent about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in natural gas last year. Um, it's hard to predict a typical year. Uh, this is really all driven on the heating season. So I do work with an energy advisor, uh, that, um, does work with both myself and with the town. And, um, she helps me with forecasting. Due to different increases that the company will be on, um, having on their rates. As well as looking and kind of averaging, uh, weather trends for the past few years. And then the next slide is very similar, um, but it looks at electricity. So again, our highest usage of, uh, kilowatt hours for electricity is with the high school. Followed by the Memorial School, then Stalbrook, Stalbrook, DePietro and so forth. I absolutely project that some of the usage for the high school will go down next year. Especially now that we've completed one part of the Green Communities Grant. Um, I don't know if it will, I don't know what significance it will be, but I am really hoping, um, to see this chart look very different. So our total spend for FY twenty for electricity was two hundred and about two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
So we're trying to include this in the, the presentation in such detail. It'll be interesting to track that on a couple of years. And to see the benefits, benefits of the upgrades and things.
Absolutely. And one of the items that I wanted to speak about with our electricity is we are very fortunate here in Bellingham. That we have, um, two different contracts with solar energy companies where we, where we are receiving. Net metering credits for all of our accounts. And what, um. What you have in front of you here is a snapshot in time from August, this past August, twenty-twenty, the billing cycle for all of our schools. And I took the, um, the average rate, the imputed rate, uh, for all the kilowatt hours utilized at each location. Uh, both with, um, the supply and the delivery, different costs involved. To that, I compared that to the net metering rate. So our solar companies where we receive our credits, they charge us, um, per kilowatt hour that we earn. From these credits, they're charging us at about ten cents, ten and a half cents per kilowatt hour. Where the imputed rate, um, that we are spending for National Grid is about. One point nine, one point seven. Uh, three point one, three cents. So the charge for the solar credits is significant. Which results in savings from anywhere, depending on the school. From anywhere from forty-five to sixty-six percent. Um, and again, this was for the month of August, which obviously generated quite a bit of solar energy. But the average savings that we received on each of our bills for that month. Was a forty percent, um, savings, which was significant. So our spend last year of two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars would have been significantly higher without. These, uh, metering agreements. So this is such an amazing program that we're part of. And I'm really happy that we're going to continue to have this moving forward. So did anybody have any questions on the net metering before I move on?
We're almost there.
Okay, all right, so, um, just to look at the basic, um, areas of variation in our budget from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. Getting back to looking at the budget as a whole, um, our collective bargaining agreements are going up about one point eight percent. An increase of three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Our special education costs, which do not include out-of-district tuitions, is increasing by about twenty percent. Um, or about a hundred thousand dollars. And this increase, I will say, is primarily due to the fact that, um, of the ESY summer program. Um, we did not have, um, a very robust program in last year's budget due to COVID. So this is really placing it back up to where it needs to be. Um, new positions that Mr. Morano had spoken about earlier is actually decreasing by about twenty percent. So the savings from that is about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the out-of-district tuitions, as we spoke prior, um, previously as well, that has been reduced by about twelve percent. Um, or savings of about three hundred and nine thousand dollars. So with, speaking about all of these major budget drivers. Um, and utilizing all of the strategic plan and meeting all of our needs, we are able to present to you. A level-funded budget, uh, for this, for FY twenty-two. To break it down a little bit differently for you, um. Our general fund appropriation, which I had just stated is level funding, zero percent change, a zero dollar change. We are looking for twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars, eight hundreds, I'm sorry. My goodness, twenty-seven million. Nine hundred seventeen dollars. And of that, um, we do receive a portion of that from our chapter seventy state aid. Um, that has increased by less than one percent this year, so not a significant increase. As part of our foundation, um, formula, the town is required to, um. Contribute a certain amount to the school department each year. That dollar amount this year decreased by, um, under one percent. Um, they're required to contribute, um, a little over nineteen million dollars. And then above the required minimum contribution. Uh, they are, this year going to be contributing about one point eight million dollars. So that is a breakdown of, um, where the funding comes from for our general fund. And how it's, how it's, um, allocated or differentiated between town and state.
Thank you, Mrs. Rebelo, so. All right, uh, first of all, thank you, Mrs. Rebelo, that was a lot of, a lot of information, very well presented, appreciate it. Um, could you back, could we go back to the other slide that's we have in front of us? This one? Yeah, yeah. All right, so, you know, just going through the, the presentation, first of all, was. Very solid, I appreciate it, I respect it. Um, you know, thank you to your administrative team and to you, Mr. Morano, for putting together. And, and again, for people that are coming to just this meeting, you know, recognize that this is the culmination of a series of meetings. Was, um, some of which this committee has had, and many of which you and your administrative, uh, administrative team have had. In order to hash through this and try to, uh, create something to move forward that can be productive, successful for our students and our community. Uh, so we, we appreciate that. Right, and so it's certainly great news that, you know, when it comes out on a level-funded basis, right? That we're not seeking addition, but yet the budget is, contains many additions to it, right? And so, you know, perhaps you could kind of give us the, you know, executive version, you know, for, again, for people that are just coming to this of how we're able to, to do that. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a combination of a bunch of, you know, some terrible things that happened, but then that led to alternative sources of funding this year. That it put us in a very unique position, right?
So I, I think if you think about it, in that thirty thousand foot, right, kind of view, it's a combination of. Uh, override funds that we see and we're, are getting in FY twenty-two. It's the SIR funds that we're anticipating and receive and anticipating. It's the COVID funds we received this current year that offset a lot of our expenses. So those, those things really made a difference for us for FY twenty-two, that we can come in at level funded. But have made all those changes position-wise, adding different components, but still were able to come in, you know. At the same amount because we're utilizing those funds effectively.
Okay. Everyone's freezing on me tonight, sorry. Convenient timing.
Convenient timing.
Um, well, and I would also, I would also suggest too, right, more than suggest, say. That, you know, the position that we're in, it's a combination of those things, right? The very generous support of this community with the override, right? It's allowed us the opportunity to do some great things. Uh, the opportunity we've had through COVID money of various sources that we've talked about enough tonight. But also, I think fiscal restraint, fiscal responsibility, and some management of that money as it was coming in. Okay, to use, utilize it appropriately, strategically, uh, to try to put the district in a position to not just survive this year, but survive what's coming. Okay, because we, you know, there's a little bit of a great unknown, unknown out there that we still have to be prepared to, to work our way through.
I, I, I think you, you all know me very well and. Administrative, administrative, administrative team also that, you know, when we look at our budget. We're always looking at being fiscally responsible throughout the process. Every time, we don't spend money just to spend it, we do it targeted ways to improve the experience. A, a wise man told me a long time ago, always remember you're spending other people's money, right? So I take that to heart. So whenever we present our budget, or if anybody asks questions, I will be, and I promise this. As always, a hundred percent transparent, there's no, uh, there's no fluff in this, in this presentation or. Uh, you know, ways to kind of skirt the system. This is our budget, this is where we're spending the money, it's all directed to students. And, and how to, you know, impact their futures. So I take it incredibly seriously and professionally, it's, it's super important that we do that, uh, always.
You know, and I'll, I'll just say from my observations and of course we'll open up everyone to, I, I, I really enjoyed the presentation tonight. Again, it's a culmination of a lot of different meetings and a lot of information, um, and a lot of tough decisions, right? And a lot of, you know, I, as told you before, we know you don't have a crystal ball, but you kind of need one. You know, you kind of need one to see what's, what's coming upon us and, um, and I respect that, that, I think that the process also reflects the degree of uncertainty that we're. Dealing with and tries to put us in as good a position as possible to deal with uncertainty and things that are, you know, maybe worse than we hope. Okay, uh, you know, just in case. Um, so first of all, I really appreciated the, the presentation. Now, I think I'm, I'm proud of what the district has accomplished this year and what, how we put ourselves in a position, um, for next year. So and the year after, yeah, right, because this is, this is going to be a staggering, slow roll. You know, uh, effect to see really where, where we're at. And again, we started this whole process with the override, and the override was pre-COVID, right? And the override was to get some positions to address things, again, pre-COVID, that had nothing to do with COVID. To try to improve our students' experience here and our, and their opportunities here. Um, to give them opportunity beyond here and also to retain more school, students right here in, in our community. And I think that we've taken some big steps towards that way. I think this budget helps continue those steps forward. Despite the fact that we've been dealing with dramatic unprecedented circumstances this year. Uh, and then, and I look forward to seeing how, you know, that it actually plays off. You know, uh, you know, I'm confident and comfortable with it and I appreciate it.
I, I give huge, uh, kudos to our administrative team, Mrs. Rebelo, for creating this, this budget, right? This is not, so it's never easy, right? This was even more difficult, right, this year and the next, so it takes, like you mentioned, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, a lot of work. A lot of, um. Uh, you know, educated guesses, you know, on what could, what potentially could happen and, and making sacrifices. You know, and, and not, not for kids, but making opportunities for kids, so, you know, it's a lot of work. We, we dive deep into it, starting in October. Right, this is, this was, this was started in October, this wasn't just, uh, you know, a month ago, right? So it's a lot of work. If I think about it in the big picture, we have a, we're asking for no additional funds from the town, yet we have significantly increased. Services that were provided to the students, much needed, and we're putting the students. You know, education as the number one thing, um, but we're also making it so that we have a sustainable budget. That will carry us through the next few years as well. But the students, the students' education, the students' learning opportunities were the number one factor when we. Did this budget.
Absolutely. This, this was the most, by far in the years I've been on the committee, to the most comprehensive, uh, presentation, so, so I, I thank you.
I'm smiling under the mask, this, this is the best presentation we've put up, yeah. I'm so proud of this presentation, this is, you know, we put a lot of work into this, and I think it really captures it. When I met with the administrative team, um, I said, this year, when we present this budget, I want it to tell a story. Right, I think that's the best way for us to kind of present it to you into, into the public. It's a story, and I wanted you to see it from soup to nuts, so I hope that's what, what you got tonight, and, and I hope that's what people are hoping about tonight. We'll be posting this video and the presentation online for the next day or so, anybody can go back and review it and. Uh, if they have additional questions, you certainly can ask.
Okay. All right, again, have you, you know, questions, comments?
I feel like the last couple of years, there's been a lot of doom and gloom.
Yeah.
I think this is the first positive budget process we've had, at least during my, my time on. Uh, well put together, well put together.
I think if you're a parent in this, in this district and your child, it's in any one of those buckets of their educational journeys. You can look at this and realize that you see what you are and that you're part of a bigger puzzle, you know, you're a small piece of the bigger puzzle. And that we know all parents don't come to all these meetings, we know they chime in when they kind of get a, keep their interests and they can see that. You can understand us when we take it away through this setting, you can kind of understand where you are and how this unmothers you, your family and your, your student. And I think that's a big kudos to your team to do that. Um, because it does tell a story, and it is a story, how we get, though, when we did the override, we knew where we were headed. Without the override, we were gonna put us in serious deficit, but we didn't want to see us in that path. And we made this happen to make it happen, so.
I, I, I just want people to know at home, you know, that. We care deeply about your kids, you know, we want them to get the best education possible through the Bellingham School. When I mentioned earlier in the strategic plan that we want to go from good to great, I didn't, we, we didn't put that in there because it looks good. We, we, we need that, right? We want this district to be the very best it can be, and then every student walks away with the best education they can get. So I, I take that to heart, I know the administrative team and our teachers take that to heart, uh, and our staff. So, you know, when I say it, I mean it, and, uh, we work really hard to get there, and it's not perfect. It, it's hard and it's a challenge, but we do the best we can, and, uh, we continue, we'll continue to do that.
I don't want to, just because we have unique hybrid meetings tonight, I know Mrs. Columbo wasn't able to participate with us, uh, in person, so. Uh, one, make sure that we give her an opportunity if you had something you want to add or say, I don't want to overlook her with not being here.
I just want to say from where we were, um, a year ago, last October, sitting down to do the budget. We were all panicking, we're like, oh my god. And this was before COVID and before the override, so. And it always amazes me the amount, when you see it in black and white, how much money. It's an ebb and flow through, through all the accounts. It's crazy, I don't know how you guys do it. And figure it all out. So my hat's off to you guys.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, so where, where are we?
Yeah, so what's next? Actually, you're done right now.
Yeah.
We, we come back on Thursday.
Right.
Uh, so it gives you, you an opportunity to digest the entire presentation, parent of people at home to digest. Um, if anyone has questions, uh, certainly reach out to myself, Mrs. Rebelo. With any, any of the physical questions that they have, programming questions, we'll help answer any of those. Um, we come back on Thursday, and that's when we'll approach the board to approve, um, our FY twenty-two budget.
Okay.
So it'll be a bottom-line budget, correct?
No, we thank your administrative team too, we should also thank our, and we always recognize and appreciate our relationship with the town too. I know that you've worked hand in hand with them during the course of the year, as this has been unprecedented in. Sources of funding and grants and opportunities, and as the town has worked hard to try to, uh, survive this as a, as a municipality, as an entity itself. So we really, uh, really appreciate their, their input, their support, their guidance for many of these decisions.
I, I am incredibly lucky to have, uh, the relationship I do with the towns, yes, especially Mr. Frame. Uh, we, we talk weekly around budget, what's coming up next, you know, we work together. I think that's important for a school district and a town to have that, uh, relationship. Uh, I've talked to other students who have had, so they will have that, you know, it makes it much more challenging, but. We're all in this together, and I know that on the town side, they want the kids to have the best education they can have also. Uh, I appreciate their support for all of it.
Yeah, great, great, okay, all right, great, so we'll, uh, we'll end our meeting for tonight and we'll reconvene on Thursday. And everyone, if you've got questions or concerns, we'll turn them to Mr. Morano, uh, so they can be addressed. And, uh, and we'll take it to the next step then.
Absolutely. Uh, this is, Robert, I already gave you the Zoom link for. Absolutely. This is Robbedu. I already gave you the Zoom link for Thursday, correct? Yes, so there's a Zoom link that's posted for Thursday's meeting. Again, we can meet in person. I'll set up the Zoom and.
Okay, great. Okay, all right. Thank you again to Mrs. Morano and to your administrative team. Great job tonight, very thorough. And having said that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Jakes, all those a favor? Okay, unanimous, Mrs. Robbedu, thank you very much.